Mayor?
We're live.
We are, okay, thank you. We'll give it one more minute. Oh, it is seven. Mike doesn't agree with the... No problem. Okay, we'll get started. I call to order the parking work session of the Manassas Park Governing Body for January 26, 2021. "Per the General Assembly's approval of the Governor's amendments to the biennial budget, the Governing Body may now meet electronically without a quorum actually assembled in a single location and without the in-person Governing Body members voting on the participation of those who are remoting in. The following benchmarks for the meeting this evening have been met. First, the Governor has declared a state of emergency for the current COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with Code of Virginia. Second, the declared emergency makes it impractical or potentially unsafe for the Governing Body to assemble in a single location, and guidance from state and federal government support this determination. Therefore, the Governing Body will be meeting with various members participating electronically through go-to-meeting. Third, the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Governing Body. Fourth, the Governing Body will make available a recording or transcript of the meeting on its website in accordance with Code of Virginia. Fifth, notice has been and will continue to be provided to the public using available methods. Lastly, we have made and will continue to make arrangements for the public access through electronic means, including the ability to comment. Those participating electronically, the individual is Vice Mayor Banks; those participating in person are Councilmember Haseeb Javed, who will probably arrive shortly; Councilmember Yessi Amaya; Councilmember Laura Hampton; Councilmember Daryl Moore; Councilmember Alana Mensing; and Mayor Jeanette Rishel." Okay, there's no need to approve the agenda, so we will go right into the work session. As an introduction, the purpose is to try to provide a Governing Body consensus and guidance to staff for a productive approach to solving the parking problems of the city. Governing Body members have provided questions and comments to staff about possible options, and staff did some research and provided a document for us to look over and discuss this evening. That document was placed on the website. So first, let's see if there are any comments, resident comments. There are no resident comments that have been sent in. Okay. Well, then, let's get started. Who would like to begin with their comments, suggestions, preferences, what they think will work, what they think won't work? Who would like to begin? Councilmember Hampton?
Not at the time, no.
Okay. Councilmember Mensing, do you want to begin?
Sure. So previously, I was leaning towards, as I wrote, decal-only overnight parking on the entirety of the city. But after reading this over and looking it over, things that really stuck out to me, I really, I think maybe starting on the west side would be a better idea, because that's where the bigger problem is. And then we can either do east side later or by petition. I also really liked the visitor pass. I know that it kind of places a lot on staff, but I think that everyone really needs a way to have someone come visit them, stay the night. And with the lack of driveways and garages on the west side, I would hate to restrict that for them. So I liked the idea of a visitor pass that kind of lasts the year and then expires, then you need a new one, so that we don't get abuse of the visitor pass. The kiosk for another one would be something I would be interested in speaking about. Those are the things that stuck out to me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Amaya, do you have any comments?
Not at this moment.
Not yet, okay. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The things that stuck out to me was the ability of the city to ban commercial vehicles. I really liked the question-and-answer period that talked about maybe allowing two trucks, but then if it's more than two, it's probably a commercial business that should be relocated to a more commercial site or location. That makes sense to me. I also would like to change our definition of a commercial vehicle, or at least expand it to include things like boats and jet skis and RVs. I think those vehicles should not be parked on our city streets, freeing up a lot of space. So those are some of the two things I'd like to see go forward with.
Councilmember Javed?
Yeah, I was trying to get my notes. So I think one of the topics, I think Councilmember Moore touched on, was the commercial vehicles, the fact that they are parking near, close to intersections. Sorry, do I have to remove this? You guys hear? Close to intersections and the fact that the trailers and boats are taking up parking spaces. We should find a dedicated spot for those instead of in front of residents' homes. So commercial vehicles is one thing I want to address and see what we could do in regards to that. I guess a lot of comments from the, you know, from social media and from the residents, I guess they're kind of confused is that we have a city decal and why it can't be enforced using the city decals instead of getting another parking permit. So is that something we could chat about? They suggested something about enforcing city decals after 8:00 p.m., like 8 to 8:00. So only people parking in Manassas Park streets are the residents? Other than that, I need to collect my other notes, but that's what I have on top of my head so far.
Vice Mayor Banks, do you have comments?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Mensing's approach, starting with the west side first, and Councilmember Moore's suggestion on the definition of commercial vehicles. My thing I want to mention is that this is going to be very much an educational issue in terms of informing our residents about the overnight lots in particular, that they're available, which ones. And I have a feeling that we may have to take an incremental approach depending on the streets, what works, what doesn't work. That's what I have a feeling of, in my experience of working and being in DC and Crystal City are restricted parking. But I like the approach of starting with the west side first.
Okay, thank you, Preston. I'm very much attracted to the petition option, so that I like things that are resident-driven, and I guess I feel that if the residents can band together and get whatever percentage would be decided, X percentage of residents on their street, to sign a petition to go with overnight decal only, then that might be a productive approach. It could also serve as a pilot program so that we can see how that would work. And of course, we would have to place a minimum on the length of the street that they could designate, because we're trying not to push it off into another neighborhood, so we're not sure how that would work, but we would need to have a certain percentage of the people in that, on that street agree. Overnight parking pass of some type, very good idea. Not sure how the mechanism would be. I guess there's several options for the mechanism. For commercial vehicles, I'm assuming that we would, or would we go with the definition in the packet that came to us that it would be considered a commercial vehicle if it has a company logo on the side? It wouldn't just be a work truck, like an all-white work truck, is that correct?
No.
Or what would it be?
Yeah, we didn't make any recommendations on what it should be. We just brought up the issue that there should, that there is a distinction between a true company vehicle with the logo versus, we have a lot of blue-collar workers here who are utilizing work trucks that we, you know, believe as a staff that we should accommodate to them as well. So that's all we raised, but we didn't make any recommendations. We just wanted to, you know, point out that there could be, it all depends on how we define commercial vehicle.
Because my thought was that there are commercial vehicles with a logo on the side. Sometimes folks only have one car, one vehicle, their spouse takes that, and they're compelled to take the work truck. So my question would be, if the work truck with the logo is parked in the driveway, would that be approved? Or what permutation of that would we go with? Does anybody have any comments on that?
Speak from experience from back in the day here. Back in the day, you weren't allowed to have a commercial vehicle with signs on it and park on the street. I knew that firsthand. This one, my father was a home improvement contractor, and he had the business out of the house. And so we're talking about this, I think it was the '70s and the '80s, and they would not allow you to park it on the street. And so that's one of the reasons why some of the folks on the west side, because at that time, that's all there was, had driveways and/or had become signs that were magnetic. So this is, so I guess what I'm trying to say, I guess what I am trying to say is that we've gone down this path before, and it did work, where, you know, if it was a commercial vehicle, you could park it in your driveway. If it was by commercial, meaning that you had a sign on it. If you didn't have a sign on it, you could park it out in the street. But the one question I did have is what is our current definition of a commercial vehicle? I think that's a good starting point. This way, we all are on the same, have the same definition, and we can go from there.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I would have to look through the ordinance.
Dean? Dean, did you hear the question? Dean?
So Dean or Mickey, how do we define commercial vehicles currently in our code?
Yeah, sorry, I had myself on mute here. So yeah, I can chime in real quick here. So right now, just to kind of expedite things, Section 24-51 of the city code prohibits the parking of motor trucks on city streets with, that have more than two axles, have more than six wheels, exceed the total length of 24 feet, and registered for any state agency or of motor vehicles exceeding 10,000 pounds. So that, we don't really prohibit the commercial vehicles, we prohibit trucks of a certain size. And I would suggest that's probably the better way to go, because we do have home occupations, as Mickey can attest. They may very well have a vehicle that's registered with that business, and that vehicle might very well have their logo on the side of it. Mickey can address whether or not they're allowed to have vehicles, but if they are, how do we discriminate between those that are lawful, have a lawful business in the city, and a home occupation, and those that don't? And how do we discriminate against people who are driving home with their work vehicle that might have a logo on the side of it versus those who are just parking their vehicles just for convenience and don't live in the city? So I just want to throw that out there and see if there's any thought on that.
Any thoughts?
I used to own a party rental business back in 2008, and I had a home occupancy permit. I was allowed to have one commercial vehicle with signage, but I think it's the way Ms. Councilmember Hampton's saying, that I couldn't park it on the street, I could only park it in the driveway. If I had another vehicle that showed magnetic signs, I would get, I think it was Margaret back in the day, "Come to my house and tell me I had to take them off." So they would only allow one commercial vehicle. So that was convenient for me as a home-based business. Now, I have a little concern when it comes to construction workers, because they do have vans, sometimes they have two, I guess, two vehicles, depending if they're subcontractors or contractors. And if they were to park those cars in parking lots that are not being surveyed, they don't have surveillance or they're not being monitored, that they could lose their materials. So that would be something that we would have to think about if we were going to have like overnight parking for commercial vehicles, because how are we going to be, I mean, that's a liability for them. So that's something that concerns me.
Okay, any comments on that?
I would say whatever we do with commercial vehicles should be uniform throughout the city. Otherwise, they're just going to park them where we don't have the restrictions.
Yeah, that's a valid point. Yeah, and we want to try to strive to have some flexibility for the folks who are in a bind and must drive that vehicle to work and home because their spouse has the other vehicle, so... Preston, do you have any comments?
I, yeah, I was just looking at, just using the example Arlington County's Code of Commercial Vehicle. I think they do look at the gross vehicle weight that Dean mentioned of 12,000 pounds, but I don't know, Dean, if you mentioned the three axles or more as part of the definition of commercial vehicle?
Yeah, anything more than two axles. Now, and I was just, I did look up the home occupation provisions, and so you can have one commercial vehicle associated with the home occupations parked at the premises at any time. So it says at the premises, it doesn't really say on-site versus on the street.
Dean, I believe that actually does mean parked in the driveway.
Okay, well, you're the zoning administrator, and you determine, you know, you interpret the zoning ordinance, so if that's the case, then there you go. So if you were going to restrict any kind of commercial vehicle that met the conditions that I've listed, or had a commercial, or some sort of a sign on it, the only problem with that is then how do you deal with the blue-collar worker driving the van home? Maybe they have a paint, they have to be up at 5:00 in the morning to go on-site. They're parking for convenience, how do you restrict that? How do you carve that out? Because there's no real way of knowing that ahead of time, so they basically get a ticket, and then they'd be forced to come down to the police station and show that they had a legitimate reason to park there, which is a little bit cumbersome.
I just got a question.
Right, I think one of the suggestions was maybe two commercial vehicles per resident. I don't know if the Governing Body would be minimal to that, but that might allow some flexibility. And again, that would be parking with, on the drive, in the driveway or on the property.
So no, so you're saying no commercial vehicles could be parked on the street, and they can be parked only in the driveway? Is that right?
Well, I mean, you know, I always look at it from a civilian perspective, which is on private property. You know, I think there should still be some flexibility with parking commercial vehicles on the street. But, you know, when you, that, I guess that's up to the Governing Body to decide, but I mean, if it was in a civilian ordinance, it would have to be just related to private property, not for...
Well, let me throw something else at you then. So you're saying that each residence could have two commercial vehicles associated with it, but how do you know who they're associated with? You can't just run the tags, because the tags are going to show wherever the business is. So if they're driving home, and there's five of them in front of a house, well, who's to say that three of those aren't someone else that live in another house? So that I, it might be kind of problematic doing that unless we gave them a, you know, unless they came and got a temporary tag, or we have a special parking tag that they could hang in there that says they've registered with the police department or Commissioner of Revenue or whomever, just to say that they do actually live there, and then we can associate that vehicle with the individual residence. Maybe that's a way to do that.
I think it's easier than that.
Right.
If it's just, if it's prohibited on the street, and we're saying on driveways, you can only have two commercial vehicles, well, if someone has two, more than two commercial vehicles on their driveway, it's on their property, so the property owner's in violation regardless. So it doesn't really matter that their neighbor came over who has a commercial vehicle. Our prohibition is you can't have more than two commercial vehicles parked in your driveway to simplify for the police, because if not, you just keep adding these extra layers of a special tag here, a special tag there.
Yeah.
You're creating a huge administrative burden. So I think the simpler, whatever you guys come up with, let's try to keep it simple as possible would be my recommendation, and uniform as well.
Well, do these commercial vehicles require a decal?
Helping the parking situation on the street, what does it matter if they have two or one in their driveway? I mean, if we're talking about parking, I understand the aesthetics of it, which is something separate with the zoning ordinance, but as far as parking regulations, if we're allowing commercial vehicles on the street, then that, I think, is the problem, is because what, they're bigger, they're more unwieldy, they restrict line of sight. I mean, what are the reasons that they wouldn't be able to park on the street?
Because they're trying to limit the number of commercial vehicles being, an abuse of commercial vehicles that are taking up parking spaces. So the reason why we want to accommodate two is because that's a balance. It accommodates blue-collar workers while opening up parking spaces on the street. That's, look, that's the goal that I've been hearing from the Governing Body and from the public, is limit the number of commercial vehicles parking on the street because they're taking up parking spaces of residents. But if we recognize that we have a blue-collar worker community, so the balance is, well, let's at least allow two to be parked on their property, and that would at least give a balanced approach.
So none at all on the streets, is that what we're saying?
Well, we're not saying that, that's what I'm saying, if, that would be the balanced approach, to resolve those two separate problems. Lack of parking on the street will also accommodate a blue collar worker.
Councilmember Hampton had a comment.
Thank you. So one of the comments that I had was that we do have to tackle those commercial vehicles for workers, that they're registered in other jurisdictions and they're here. Not all of them have city stickers on it.
Right.
I didn't know that from doing just a windshield drive, you know, windshield survey. So I know that was, one of the questions asked in here, and I know that was one of the comments, was that perhaps reaching out to the state corporate commission and getting, but that would only work for things that are here. So my question is, how are we going to tackle it? Or what is the approach to tackle it for folks that live here, they have a company vehicle, but it doesn't have a sticker?
So they live here, and they have a company vehicle. If they're going to be housing it here, they're going to have to get a decal, and the commissioner will grant that.
Right, but you have some workers that, they work for a company that's not housed here, but that truck is coming home every day in Manassas Park.
They have a garage though in our city, and they need a sticker.
Right, but what I'm saying is not everybody's doing that.
Yeah.
But that's my point, the requirements are there that they have to do. If you have now the decal overnight requirement, that allows now police to identify who's not doing that and start taking, if they're parking on the street now, if they're...
Right, in the yard, that's something else.
Now we have the visibility. If we're going to change, there was another ordinance discussed in the fall about, you know, what's a disabled vehicle, the definition of that, and we made the recommendation, we'll add the lack of a decal, not just because right now, lack of a Virginia plate is, makes it an operable vehicle. Or maybe we say also not adding a decal is also now an operable.
Or a current decal.
Correct, that way we can, oh, if you're on the driveway, you don't have a current decal, now you're going to get cited, or if you're on the street in a commercial vehicle, you don't have a decal, you're going to get ticketed and potentially towed.
Okay. And then the solution would necessitate doing the entire west side in order to capture everything? Is that where we're headed?
I feel like any commercial vehicle should have a decal on it if it wants to stay the night in the city. Otherwise, everyone from the west side is going to park them on the east side.
Absolutely.
So the commercial piece of this has to be uniform for the city.
Okay.
But that would probably, again, necessitate a sign change across the city. So before you do that, you may want to consider if you're ever going to go to no-decal citywide, because you saw the price here of changing the signs. I'd hate for us to just add, you know, change the signs on the east side just to say, oh, commercial vehicles require a decal, and then three years from now, we say, oh, no, decal overnight parking, and now we have to change the signs all over again. So just to keep that, and we can do it, but it's just you're spending a lot of money.
I agree with you, but I can't, I can't limit commercial vehicle parking on the west side and not the east side, because I know that that's just going to be a problem.
Well, that's all, and that's also just going to add a layer of confusion. If it's not universal, then, I don't know if anybody's ever driven in DC, and you're looking at the sign, and you're not sure what date, like, you know...
Yeah, what zone you're in, or, yeah.
Well, let me ask you this, what part of the east side can commercial vehicles park? There's no, there's no public parking, there's no public place they could park.
Is it across the way? They're on the street now. They're on the street all over the place.
No, no, I'm saying that's not managed by HOA. Those areas on that side of the, of the, of Manassas Park are all managed by HOA.
The streets are not.
None of the streets.
None of the streets in Blooms Crossing are, none of the streets in Blooms Crossing. I could tell you Stephanie, William, Cougar, they all have commercial vehicles. Matthew on the street.
But they're all managed by HOA, though?
No, the streets are not.
The only two streets in Blooms Crossing that are managed by...
There's a slide here.
Yeah, Black Hawk and Silver Meteor.
Meteor, Silver Meteor.
So this, yeah, this is, this is kind of the city center area, so you have the apartments here, and then you have Digital Drive here, so the Dominion Crossing. But...
All right, well, that's, if it's not managed by HOA, then that makes sense, then.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
Okay.
And I know that HOA has reached out to the city in the past to ask to please limit the commercial vehicles on the streets.
Absolutely.
Numerous times since we've moved here.
So I have a question for everyone. If we limit, if we do the commercial citywide, the overnight parking with required decal, do we do that citywide, or do we do west side, or do we do?
West side.
How do you want to handle that?
I would prefer to do west side first.
Okay. So commercial citywide, west side just for the overnight decal to prevent Prince William folks from coming in and...
Right.
Right, okay.
There hasn't been that much of a parking issue on the east side.
Right.
That we see, we experience on the west side.
Right. No, I just wanted to clarify what we're talking about.
Could we also define recreational vehicle as a boat or a jet ski or something and prohibit them from being on there?
I think we should.
Yes, but could that be separate than commercial? Could that be like a recreational vehicle for the boat and have that be citywide as well?
That's a Dean question. Because RVs, jet skis, boats should not be parked on public streets.
Even utility trailers, too. Utility trailers.
We're having a hard time understanding what's being said. What was the question?
Could we define like a recreational vehicle, like jet skis or boats also?
RVs.
I think, yeah, somewhere in the code, because we have a carve-out for recreational vehicles. Currently, it says no parking of motor trucks as defined, like the definition I gave you that says excluding recreational vehicles. Now, I'd have to go through the code. We did something a while back with recreational vehicles to allow them to be parked at storage places, you know, so that people could stow them somewhere. But yeah, we can certainly define a recreational vehicle and prohibit that. I think we already do, but, you know, maybe I'm wrong.
Sorry, I don't have the recreational vehicle section.
I know recreational vehicles you can actually park on your property, specifically like a RV. And don't believe it has to be on a, well, I think it, there's provisions, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I know it does allow for parking of a recreational vehicle on your property.
So 24-51 regulates trailer beds and boats. You raised the issue of boats, so... So we do have excluding recreational vehicles. We have to just amend that.
I was citing earlier.
But personally, I think that if we took care of the commercial vehicles with no decals and the recreational vehicles, that takes care of the parking problem on the east side. I think that clears out plenty of spaces, and I don't see the need for overnight decal parking on the east side at this time.
I would agree.
Can I throw another little kind of a wrinkle in this whole thing? Because currently, Section 24-50 says that everybody has to have a decal to park in the city. I think that that's redundant, because we also have that requirement for a decal in the license, in Chapter 14, which is for licenses. I think we probably, if you're going to require decals for overnight parking, we need to tweak this section, because right now, it's a misdemeanor violation to not get one. I think we could tweak this a little bit and make it very specific for parking, and then you could go ahead and designate, you could just go ahead separately and say, as designated by the Governing Body by resolution, that way you could amend it rather easily where it's going to apply. So that's a recommendation if you're leaning towards the decal parking requirement for overnight parking.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah. So one of my recommendations is that if when we do roll down the west side, we actually pick the streets that are adjacent to Old Centerville Road, because that's usually where you're having most of the problems, the bleed of the Prince William County residents in there. in there. Um, and maybe we just start off with one small street and do it for a prolonged amount of time, whether that's, I don't know, a month, six weeks, whatever it is, that we can actually see what the hiccups are and kind of iron out those hiccups before we roll it out to another street or citywide.
Do you think that people...
Yes, yeah. And then maybe do an increment, and you know, and possibly an incremental rollout, you know?
My concern with that is that the people from Spruce Street will just park on Lambert. You're just going to get them moving and moving and moving and moving, and then you're going to create a bigger problem on a street that's already complained and complained, and now they're like, why did you do that for X streets and not us? Now they're parking on our street. My concern about a pilot program is it's not going to actually be effective. They're just going to move. They're going to go somewhere else. I mean, these people have a desperate problem.
Effective regarding the folks coming in from the county?
Right. Or say you've got someone on one of these streets running in who has seven cars, who lives here. They're not county people, they have seven cars, and now they can't park them, they're going to park them somewhere else in Manassas Park. The cars are just going to move, because you're only blocking off a couple of streets. They can walk a couple more blocks. I mean, they legitimately have nowhere to park their car. They're going to find a place, and Manassas Park is still the free-for-all.
Comments?
Well, if they're Manassas Park residents, so right now we're not, from what I can understand, we're not tying the, the, um, city sticker to a specific part of the city. So if you've got a, if you have a city sticker, you're fine, but it seems to me if you don't have a city sticker, then you're going to get dinged. So that, that might, that possibly can curb some of the, the spread. My only concern of doing a total rollout for something brand new is just the hiccups. And, and you know, just something I've seen doing this with IT, you typically don't do a shotgun blast of a rollout, especially when it's an initial new project like this, because there are going to be things coming up that we didn't think of. And it's easier to fix it on a smaller scale than it is on a larger scale.
What, what would you think if, say for, now, this is a hypothetical, of course, instead of, say, just, for example, doing Holden, if we did Holden, say, for example, and in addition to some other streets like Colburn and the Tremont, those three streets there, Tremont, I can't remember the other...
Like the cluster of...
Yes, exactly. That it would be like a section, not just one street that the pilot...
Well, you're always going to have edges of that section, and they're just going to park on the next street, because these people don't have decals. It doesn't matter if they're a resident or not, they don't have a decal, they're going to park. So say you like ended it at Walden, they're just going to park, the Walden people, well, now they just have a block to walk, because there's always an edge of the section. I'm just concerned that it's going to create a problem on a street, and people are going to be very upset that we didn't take care of them. We did it for someone else and not them.
No, I see your point. Um, if, if we could get Vice Mayor Banks' comment, he's patiently waiting. Do you have a comment, Preston?
I'm good at listening, really good, good discussion. Um, I agree with Alana, you're just going to have a spillover to the, the street that's adjacent that doesn't have the parking restriction. Um, and I, I absolutely agree with Laura's point, that we're going to have to, it, it's going to be some increments there, there's going to be some tinkering that we're going to have to do, right? I mean, but, but, um, and I think that, I think Dean or someone mentioned that we're going to have to look at recreational vehicles and define them and say that they are not, they were restricted from parking on our streets. You can park in your driveway, but not on the streets. Um, and that's probably points.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Preston. Did you have a comment, Laszlo? I saw you stood up and...
Yeah, I think what, what the goal, I'm understanding correctly is the, the concern is the county residents that are parking on the street. So as long as you have the pilot program sufficient where they wouldn't walk to it, but to councilmember Alana's point, that's a pretty big area. So you may as well do the whole thing, because you would have to, in order to stop the county residents from parking, you probably have to cut off all of this area to make it that far of a lock that they just wouldn't come in there, and then you've got a big chunk. But it's still, I mean, it's, it's an option if you want to do a pilot. Just cover this area here, I think this is, this area is more commercial, you won't have a problem there. Um, but this, this certainly, this area over here, although I think we do get a lot of complaints from residents over here about county people parking here, so you may have to knock off a big chunk here, but you're already doing now nearly half of the west side.
Also, if you remember, um, prior councilmember Sendehaus used to say people would just drop off their car and wait for a ride, so it wasn't even a matter of walking. They're just dropping it and getting picked up and driving home. So it doesn't matter if they're on that side or this side, they're still going to do that.
Good point.
Actually, that was a good point, that people are being actually dropped off and realize that they're driving backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah. Question for you, Laszlo. Um, this is going back on, I guess, the commercial vehicle. Uh, right now, uh, the police department takes police cars home, right? The police cars are garaged here in Manassas Park, right?
So...
Because I'm trying to make a correlation with that with, say, like Pest Now, they, they have their technicians take their trucks that are garaged in Fairfax, registered in Fairfax, but they could drive that truck home, right?
Yeah, so they, again, under our, under this new program, if they park in their driveway, they don't have more than two, they'd be okay. And anyways, uh, I, I don't think, and making, and Dean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think this applies to police vehicles. Is that right?
Well, I was just making a correlation.
Okay.
Yeah. I know the police vehicles are not considered commercial, but, uh, say, like, she was saying, like, some people, like, companies have it garaged somewhere else.
Yeah.
How are we going to make them garage in Manassas Park too?
No, no, we don't want to make anyone garage anything. All we're saying is if you're going to garage your vehicle in our city, it better be in our driveway, and it better not be more than two.
Well, then the places with no driveways, no garages, what's the solution for that then?
That's the challenge, yeah. There's no, there's no solution.
Because, I mean, we're not concerned about drive, parking on the driveway, we're concerned about the public parking.
Correct, but that's why we're, that's why we're trying to come up with this balance. But the balance doesn't protect everyone, because you're right, there's about, what did we say, about, we, our best guess is around ten, ten percent of the homes that don't have garages and driveways, so if they happen to be the, have homes that have the commercial vehicle, they're going to be upset about this program.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they are.
Again, there's no perfect solution here.
Also, something that just came up while I said that people are being dropped off, are they just going to learn that now the east side is open?
Hmm.
These Prince William County people who are being dropped off with their vehicles on the west side, are they going to learn, oh, well, they didn't apply it to the east side of Manassas Park, let's start parking there? Are we going to create a problem over there?
That might be a bit far for them to drive.
Yeah, that's kind of far.
Yeah, okay.
Distance. I don't know, what do you think?
It just entered my head a couple minutes ago. I think you're right.
I will tell.
True, yeah.
And I, and I think that's where the, and I, and I also think that's where the, having the, the city sticker comes into play. If you're constantly there and you don't have a city sticker, or they run the plates and they see that you're not registered in Manassas Park, and, you know, they notice that the car's been there for thirty-one days at night, then you get a ticket. I think that's the only, um, measures that we have, that's the only teeth that we have.
They're pretty smart, they end up moving.
Yeah, they move.
I know. Oh, I know.
Yeah.
And then they'll, they'll go prove it that they've already, that they garaged their vehicle the majority of the year in Prince William County, and they therefore pay the, the tax and register their vehicle in Prince William County, so they're, they're going to make the argument that our vehicles are not being able here in your city in just a few days. But very clever, which makes it nearly impossible for our police to get them. And we'll take it down still sometimes. You know, it, it does happen, we are taking them.
I know. I know. I've seen it on my streets, no worries.
Madam Mayor?
Are there any suggestions for how we can accommodate the, the ten percent who do not have a driveway or a garage, but yet still drive a commercial vehicle? Any, any ideas how we could accommodate those folks?
You know, is that something such as a special permit that they have?
Could be.
You know, that if you live on a house that's up a hill, it's got a steep hill, and there are some, especially on, like, the two-hundred block of Cabell, they're pretty steep, and you, you just, there's no way you could put a driveway there, they get a permit, some sort of special permit. I don't know all of the administrative, um, administrative backend on that and how much of a lift it is, but that's just off the top of my head.
So they, I'm wondering if they could use the same permit that the overnight folks are going to use, like, if they have a family reunion, they have folks coming in that are going to need to stay overnight, might be able to use either that type of a, a parking pass or something very similar to it?
Probably something similar, but different.
Different color.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Laszlo, does that sound reasonable, or...
What would the decision be, that they get a special permit?
Yeah, they have no driveway, no garage.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so that, again, that would be a new, you administer the burden that you would, uh, you would have to manage that application process through probably the building firm, the community development firm. That's the only...
It, it could be the same type of permit that the overnight folks have, but a different color in order to distinguish them from the overnight.
What is the overnight, are we talking about the annual that goes out with the decals? Because that's going to be very different than a overnight parking pass.
Well, overnight visitors.
But are you asking for...
The temporary visitors.
A temporary visitor pass or an annual pass that goes to each vehicle or each home as part of their decal that they can now park on the street with for their visitors? Are you talking about like a one-time issue, like where they come to like a kiosk and get permission that this night they get that sticker? Or are you talking about a, a visitor pass that's mailed to them with their decal that they can use year-round?
For commercial vehicles?
That's a good question.
That's what I meant.
It's more administratively less burdensome.
The easier one is that the one goes out with the decal.
The annual. Right, the annual. I would think so too.
The one change of course to our system we'll have to make for Patty is that it only gets mailed here and not also here, because then you get some people over here, hey, give me your visitor pass.
Oh, yeah, right.
Our system, again, is not going to accommodate that. So I think year one, there may have to be, there may have to be some enhancements with Keystone to enable something like that to happen. That might be an extra cost. Not sure we have to come back with that.
So what about the temporary overnight visitors?
You just want like to, like, they go and they, they go to a kiosk or go to an employee and ask for an overnight for a Friday night or something like that. And that's a much bigger administrative burden.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a huge burden you're talking about. That's what some of the other jurisdictions do, and it ends up taking a lot of their staff's time, and for each time people are coming in, your parties are going to apply for the visitor passes, it's a lot to manage, whereas...
Then, then what do residents do? What are residents to do if they have company?
Well, they get the, the pass with their decals, so every household has a visitor pass. I can give it to you one night, I can give it to Yessi another night, whoever's coming to visit me, and I keep it for the year.
But the residents only have one pass if they have like, well, a bunch of relatives coming in town.
Exactly.
And they're going to stay overnight, you know? We have family reunions, we have parties of the Fourth of July, things of that nature. Yeah, I'm just concerned about that.
You're right. If, if to, with that concern, you would have to create the overnight, but then again, you're going to have to create some kind of administrative position, but that's what they're doing.
Could we do like a hybrid? Instead of doing the pass, um, open up the, the, the parking lots that were suggested and just have visitors park there? And I don't know how that will be enforced in a sense of like, with the sticker, because they're not, you know, they're not part of Manassas Park, but instead of having to have, um, a visitor's pass, they can just park there. How would that be monitored? I have no idea, but instead of having to have the city create more work for them...
I didn't catch what you said, open the what?
The parking lots, yeah. So I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking that if, if, if we, um, if we take care of the commercial problem, the commercial vehicle problem, maybe it'll, um, reduce the amount of spaces taking, that's taking in the, in the households. And then if we have visitors and we have more than one coming for that weekend, they can either way park on the parking lots that we're, we're making available, since they're visitors, they should leave in the morning. Now, if the car is still there, I don't know how that's going to be impacted with the police regarding also the, the commercial vehicles that we're thinking about putting in these parking lots. So, in other words, I think we should just do the whole commercial, the two-vehicle commercials with the stickers, and if we have more than one visitor coming to visit, that they can be allowed to park in these parking lots, or I could take my car that has a sticker and park it there and leave hit their car in my house, you know what I mean? Without having to need an actual parking pass or a visitor pass.
Okay.
Make it less work for the city, I think.
I'd like to add some clarification to that. So in the memo we discussed how, how we enforce the parking lots, do you have to designate a certain time after the streets are, are open for anyone? You designate a certain time where no one can park in those parking lots? That way towing company comes and they can clear out those vehicles, but they have somewhere to go now, because the streets are open again for, for anyone to park, remember, because this is just an overnight prohibition, so the streets open up again for, for visitors during the daytime. I just want to make that clarifying point.
It's just for overnight.
But you have to set the hours. We made a recommendation in here, our residents making a recommendation to the C, but you're, you're going to have to tell us what hours you want the prohibition for the, for the overnight decal parking. The, the parking lots is clear, I think it was a six-thirty to seven, was, gives them enough time, thirty minutes after the streets already open to go move their car, and thirty minutes before Jay starts seeing a lot more people arriving for the actual parking.
So regarding the hours, what is the hours now for the noise ordinance?
The noise ordinance? I'll have to check that code.
Okay, because I just, I think so. I, I know there's one for the weekday, there's one for the weekend.
Chief Lugo, can you look that up?
Oh.
Chief Lugo, are you there?
Maybe he's on mute.
Or Dean.
Or Trevor.
Or Dean.
Hey.
Chief, can you hear us now? Uh, the mic's not working. Trevor, is your mic working?
Yes, sir, I'll look it up.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I asked for that, because that might be, instead of having these different hours, it might be simpler for the police and for residents. It's just a thought.
Aligning with the noise.
Yeah, I like that. All right, that's a...
Um, Trevor, what are the noise hours?
He's looking it up.
Oh, he's looking it up? Oh, he's looking it up. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Preston?
I see the morning. That would be the only issue. It goes into like nine o'clock, something like that. Then we kind of hurt the people in the parking lots.
Right.
And then Jenny needs to get those parking lots cleared for park users. That's the only hiccup.
Yeah, I was thinking more of the, the start hours, not the, yeah, not the end hours. While we're waiting for him to look that up, Vice Mayor Banks, do you have any comments?
I have the answer for you for the daytime and nighttime for noise if you need it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we do. We do.
Okay, so daytime means between seven AM and nine PM on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Between seven AM and ten PM on Fridays. And then between nine AM and ten PM on Saturdays. And between nine AM and nine PM on Sundays and legal holidays. So it'd probably be the easiest just to, you know, say, it, it, nighttime, nighttime means those times excluded from the definition of daytime. So it might be easiest just to reference, you know, the parking or decals or whatever you're requiring is required for all nighttime hours as defined in section fifteen dash three of the city code. That way you just don't have to keep repeating all that stuff.
One issue is that if you're a resident and you're looking at that sign and that's what it says in reference to this code. Versus like everywhere I live where there's a prohibition, it's from a time to a time. And it's, you know, one or two off, like usually Monday through at Friday this, the weekend this. But now we keep doing like, you know, Monday through Thursday one, Friday one, Saturday one. So that's a pretty big sign there. That's gonna get a little bit complicated.
Could you make it from seven to nine?
What's that?
Could you make it from?
We can do anything you, you guys, you want. It's just, it'd be easier to, the reason why we made the recommendation for the weekend being different is that's the most likely time that you're actually gonna have visitors. So we thought the weekends, Friday, Friday through Saturday or Friday through Sunday, you're gonna want a little bit longer of the time for visitors. And then the, the rest of the days, much shorter because what we're trying to resolve on Monday through Thursdays, people coming home from work.
Work.
And they can't find apartment space. That's one problem. Then the weekend, that's not that big of an issue. The bigger priority becomes, hey, we're having a party. You know, or, you know, we, we wanna have our visitors here till X amount of time, right? I don't think, well, I guess you could have multiple visitors spending the night. But I think that would help alleviate if you structured the way we did when they have the big family reunions. Assuming people, you know, will leave by midnight, that would actually resolve that. Except for the few people that will stay around.
Well, they would not necessarily leave at midnight. They might stay overnight. With the resident, yeah.
Right. That'd be a lot of, I guess, people spending the night and then swap home.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
You're gonna have a ton.
Well, there are some large homes over there. So, you know, that they've been enlarged. So, yeah, okay.
We have a comment from, from a resident. You want me to read it or you want?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Well, he was asking, is there a possibility of marking streets so that the only residents of the house or their guests can park in front of their house?
Public right-of-way.
Yeah, so.
They do that in major areas.
Really problematic.
Like members.
Yeah.
That would be very problematic.
Yeah.
We started doing that.
Yes.
Well, I mean, uh.
They do it in some areas. In Key West, they do it.
That's what I'm saying.
They actually have it on the, on the pavement. Not all the spots, but it'll say Monroe County, because that's what county they're in. Monroe County, they have the county actually on their license plate. And it says Monroe County plates required. Not all the spots, but they have some designated.
Well, also seeing like.
That's just plates required, not. Well, they don't have a decal. They actually. Yeah, but he's asking.
Dedicated spots.
Or, or.
Dedicated spots.
Resident parking one thousand zero one boom here. Then you as a resident, you get that one thousand.
Well, I'm saying during the, during the daytime, we won't, it will be open for the public use. But we could have restricted hours for resident use only overnight. You know what I'm saying? Like, uh, the.
How many vehicles does each resident allow to have?
Well, I mean, the, the norm is two. You can't go in the morning too.
Two or four.
I mean, that's, then.
That's the problem. You can't, you can't. They're, they're not gonna have anywhere to park.
Right.
And it is a public right-of-way. Yeah.
Well.
And, and I would, and I know they're strapped for land down in Key West because, because I've been to the Keys before. But I would hesitate to, to go to another state entirely to, to, for suggestions. I think we need to try to stay within Virginia. Any comments, questions?
I feel like with that scenario as well, if I lived on a street and my, and I had two cars and no driveway, and my neighbor has nine cars and no driveway, and we have, we, we have to park on that street, I'm kind of in, in a bad situation. If we're just, you know, single-street residents only.
Well, and I think that also causes a burden for the police as well, an extra burden.
I'm at, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if, if the garden body wants to hear the results from the poll I did?
Sure.
If you guys want this. I mean, there was a couple of questions. They were asked, um, how to make more parking spaces available. Four choices. One was find dedicated parking areas for commercial vehicles. General city overnight parking decals, overnight decals only, parking for certain neighborhoods, and a neighborhood permit parking. The majority, I mean, out of the thirty people that participated, the majority of them, over about forty-five percent, voted for dedicated parking areas for commercial vehicles.
How many participated, did you say?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Five votes for the overnight parking decals, two for overnight decal-only parking for certain neighborhoods, and then two for neighborhood permit parkings. So majority of them are saying that the commercial vehicles seem to be the problem.
Yeah. When we realize that.
Yeah, so my, my thing is if we do roll out in, in sections, maybe we could just tackle the commercial first.
Yes, and the recreational.
And the recreational.
Oh.
Then we do the, maybe.
I think we should do both.
Then do the visitor parking, right? And then the overnight maybe decals.
You're talking like three waves?
Right, yeah, just doing it in different waves. Let's see, let's see if the commercial works first.
Exactly.
If that takes off, frees up parking spaces.
Exactly.
Then let's work on the, the recreationals. And then let's work on the, the overnight visitor.
I would be okay with that idea. Commercial and recreational together.
Okay, that's fine too. Yeah, we can link those together.
That might be a good idea and see if that's.
That's what I was trying to suggest.
The jet skis should not be on the street.
Right, right. Exactly.
They're huge.
So I understand. The first step, we would do the commercial prohibition that we talked about on the street. Allowing two on the driveway.
Right.
We would change the definition of rep, to not allow recreational vehicles, go off boats and trailers and all those things. That'll be the first prohibition. So the, the installation of the signs will just say, no, you know, commercial vehicle parking. You're listing what's not allowed to be parked there. We don't, uh.
Well, there was also a comment saying that, no, we don't want to restrict them during the day as workers and, um, people, like handyman people come.
Yeah, to do service on.
Do, do service on the houses. So we don't want to restrict that during the daytime hours.
Yeah, that's fine. So we just need to set an hour.
And then they're asking, is there, I know someone was against the dedicated parking space, but would that be a possibility if people do want to opt-in, have a dedicated commercial parking space?
Dedicated commercial park?
Yeah.
Yeah, where?
Like Costello Park?
Oh, a parking lot?
Parking lot, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things we touched on in our memo. That's, that's your whole expression.
And it could be an opt-in type of thing. And maybe we could have lighting and maybe some type of.
Like for their recreational vehicles.
Security or, yeah, or commercial too.
Or commercial.
But you're talking like a registration process or just opening up those lots for trailers and RVs and everything that they have to clear out every morning?
Well, they, they don't have to necessarily clear it out.
Then how are we servicing our parks?
Right. And so, and the problem with that, by allowing those vehicles or, or trailers or recreational vehicles stay there and not move every day, then it becomes a permanent spot. And then when we do have special events, like the Fall Festival or the Fourth of July or anything else that we might have, then you're, you've just reduced the amount of parking at parks and recreation.
Well, not at, there's a parking slot on the east side that's being underutilized.
Which one?
I mean, I don't know how to describe it here, but there's, I'm not talking about the parking lot adjacent to, right in front of the community center.
The one by the Stone House?
Is it west side? Yeah, I'm looking at which side.
You're talking about the one that's behind the stone, the stone.
Right, behind that. Yeah. That, that parking lot is not even used for anything. So that could be a potential parking spot, parking lot.
It is sometimes used.
But we could, we could, to avoid the junkyard usage or perception, we could avoid the, the trailers. We could just ban those on a public street and just have commercial vehicles parked there and then clear out.
But what happens if they just keep it there permanently? How do I enforce it? How do I move it?
And that's, that's one of the big concerns because that's, that's what will happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It will happen. It'll just become a junkyard.
It will.
And we'll have light again.
Well, they use it for work. I would assume they would.
No, you get a lot of people who do repairs, who, you know, take down vehicles, sell parts. Or you got a lot of handy people over there who are doing a lot of work on vehicles and that's gonna be their, their work area. I easily see that happening.
Yep.
Me too.
If you don't give me the ability to clear it out every once in a while, that's what's gonna happen.
And then you have the people that live their back of their yards that are facing that lot. Now they're having to look at that every day. So that also starts to bring down the value of their homes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that lot is used for events over at the community center. I've gone over there and it's full.
And for Mass, for Sunday Mass.
Well, Sunday, yeah.
We don't have enough parking. Now they split out the Mass service to kind of help that. But there's no reason that to begin to ban all surge post-COVID.
So we just scratched that off the table. No dedicated parking spot. Is that what we're getting at?
Oh, for commercial.
For commercial vehicles.
Yeah, unless we wanna identify from a capital improvement standpoint, a separate lot to create for that purpose. For that sole purpose.
I, I don't know that I would be for that. I'm worried about the litter. I'm worried about the crime, the vehicle theft. I'm worried about now putting in the lighting, the light pollution. I just, I don't think that that's a path I would really want to go down.
Are, would the people be able to park their boats and their recreational vehicles in their driveway? It just would not be on the street. Is that correct?
Right.
I believe that's fine.
Okay.
So, but I want to go back to Yessi's point here about, we never really concluded for the, the back to Janette's point as well. That issuing the one visitor pass, okay, but without to Janette's point, when we have a family, do, do we want to open up the lots for that purpose? And then here a good, an answer about what direction we're going in.
Well, I think we're going in the commercial vehicle RV direction right now and putting the decal overnight on hold.
Okay, so we're not, we're not even gonna talk about that.
Right. We're just gonna do commercial RV.
Come back after a few months and then see. Okay.
Yes.
It makes a lot of sense to address that first.
It's kind of our pilot program.
See what develops.
Mm-hmm.
Then for clarification, when, when would you like this to implement? Do you want to do any town halls? First for you all to engage with your, the residents about this change? Or you just want to go ahead and do it as soon as we can?
I would recommend having at least one town hall.
Yeah.
And then.
How soon could you get the signs created?
Oh, it's gonna be a week here.
I thought, I thought.
But you gotta give people the opportunity.
Well, we're getting signs along.
Exactly.
The only concern is if we get, like, outranges.
But you have to give them an opportunity.
I'd rather get public consensus.
Right. If they don't come, they don't come. But at least we gave them the choice.
Right. You gotta give them the opportunity.
Yes.
So how long, Laszlo, how long would you need to roll something like this out? Is it a matter of like, you know, a quarter? Is it five months, six months?
Yeah, so we'll definitely have to come back for a budget amendment because now we have to install signage. You saw the estimate of what we talked about for signage citywide. So we need to do it in FY, we planned for FY, FY twenty-two budget as a capital line item to knock out this signage. So we implemented sometime in FY twenty-two. And we, or the communication plan that he, we recommend ninety days before we know we're gonna install the signage, we start notifying people that this change is coming. The first step would be recommend engage with the public, get public consensus. And then as far as our budget deliberations, we have this as a CIP item for FY twenty-two for the signage changeover along with the ordinance changes that we'd be crafting. And then if you all approve that, then we go ahead and start, we get the timeline for when the production, how long it'll take us to get the signs. And then we'll let you know kind of that timeline and plan for, for the communications strategy. But sometime in FY twenty-two is when we will.
Just a clarification, Mr. City Manager. You talk about consensus. That's not our, our goal. Our goal is to educate. It sounds like the, the body has decided what we want to do. So to have a town meeting where they're trying to get consensus would seem problematic. I would think we'd want to educate the residents. This is the direction that we're going. These are the times. We're not, not, not looking for necessarily consensus, but, but education.
Absolutely. There's not always, always gonna be consensus. It's just my, you know, just caveat. If, if a ton of people come out and you hear that they don't want this, that's my only, you know, let's, let's hear that's the case. Because that may change your perspective if you hear from, you know, the majority of people saying that we don't want this for X, Y, Z.
And I imagine we will get a lot of people with boats and jet skis and, and RVs coming out and saying, it's free for me to park them here and we don't want to move them because they'll have to pay, uh, commercial space to park.
Well, they can park in their driveways.
Right, if they have a driveway.
If they have a driveway, yeah.
So, people, I, I tend to notice that people who come out are the ones who are unhappy about seeing and hearing things.
Yeah, and you're not gonna hear from the ten thousand happy people.
Who that are happy that they're gonna have parking freed up.
Yeah.
So I just want to make so that we are educating as opposed to trying to get consensus. Because I believe that's what we did here today, is we got consensus.
And after you do that, I was asking, once you feel comfortable with knowing where the public's at and you take your decision, when you get complaints in the vote in the future, you know, don't throw them to me. It's like, we've already decided, you already spoke with the public. You know, if you just, you can go back and, like, uh.
Let's, let's.
I'm like our fog guy.
No matter what we do, we will get complaints.
Right. We have not heard from Vice Mayor Banks for a while. Let's give him a chance to speak. Preston?
In regards to the, um, the recreational vehicles, the boats, I think there's a section, oh, here it is. Um, in the city code that does not allow for parking vehicles on the front yards. And I think that's, that's part of the educational component, right?
Yes.
Because it's gonna be limited space for people. And some people are gonna get creative and say, well, this is my front yard. Now it's my parking spot. And we gotta let them know that that's actually against city code to park your boat or your vehicle on, in your front yard.
Good point.
I think it's, you can park it in the driveway, but you can't park it in the grass. I, is that correct?
Yeah.
I think that's my understanding. Yeah. Can we get?
Article sixty-one, article six, section thirty-one dash twenty-seven.
Excellent.
Also, um.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Preston?
Well, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing is that are we going forward with the people who expand their house, need to put in a driveway? That's already going?
That is, that's on track.
Okay, good. Alright, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing that.
Yeah.
That can happen.
My understanding from him is it's on track. Dean, can you comment on that, you and Mickey?
Yeah, the ordinance has been prepared. All it does is treat existing homes that enlarge their, the floor area by more than ten percent. It just treats them as new homes, you know, so they have the same requirements. So if they only increase, and it's, and it's ten percent from the original size. So, you know, they can't just do like eight percent one and then, you know, another five percent another time and try to get out of it. They'd have to, the second time would trigger the requirement. So right now, the new home construction for single-family detached, which is, you know, what we usually think of as a house, there are two onsite parking require, parking spot requirements for that. Okay, so right now, without that ordinance amendment, any, any house could go ahead, if, even if they didn't have a driveway or a garage, they could come in and we could not stop them from building solely on that. You know, we couldn't say you have to put a couple of parking spaces. We can't require that right now. But they will be required to do that later. Now, as Mayor and I discussed, it doesn't have anything to do with the total area or total size of the house. So if they double it and they already have two spots, then we can't really do much about it right now. As, you know, with the code as written, because the, the requirements are for just two spaces per single-family detached home, regardless of size.
Okay, thank you, Dean. I want to ask, Keith, has any, any more comments been sent in from the public? No? Okay, thank you.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Um, so I got a question regarding the, I guess, the enlargement of the houses. Like say if it's, I guess, if, uh, someone wants to add like a sunroom and they don't have a driveway, they'll be required to add a driveway just to put a sunroom into the house? Is that my understanding?
Just to put a what? I didn't really understand what you're saying. They, they want to do what to the house?
Like, like a sunroom or like a?
Oh, it, it, it depends entirely on the total area. So a sunroom is small. It's very unlikely that that would trigger the requirement because that would be less than ten percent of the floor area.
Well, I mean.
If you're gonna put a huge sunroom, if that qualifies, and Mickey is the zoning administrator, she would determine whether or not that qualifies for increasing the total floor area. But if it does, and it's more than ten percent, then yes, they'd have, they'd be required to put two onsite parking spaces.
Well, some of, well, Dean, some of the houses out there, I mean, their square footage is like, say, fifteen hundred, right? So ten percent of that is just a hundred square, hundred fifty square feet. That's like a bedroom's.
Fifteen by ten, I mean, that's a.
That's like a twelve by twelve room.
That's something that Mickey's gonna have to chime in on, whether or not that is considered to be an enlargement of the house.
Yeah.
Um, you know, sunrooms sometimes are just, you know, just basically a patio with a couple of nice little windows and maybe some, you know, roof over it. I don't know if that qualifies, but that's, that's something that she would have to chime in on. I don't know if that's considered to be, you know, true or not.
Yeah, sunroom is a tricky, um, you need to be specific about the definition. Is it fully enclosed or is it one where it has, um, like, screens?
No, no, they say for fully, they say fully enclosed, hundred fifty square feet sunroom. That's by.
Fully enclosed, that would be considered an addition. So I would say that that would count. But if it's, it's more like an open porch with screening, I don't think that would meet the definition. And we can, uh, look up the definition of gross floor area, but typically that means, um, area that's fully enclosed.
Right, so I mean, my.
Apartment walls.
My question there is like, so an enclosed sunroom or an enlargement, enlargement of the kitchen? I mean, ten percent for one of these small houses is not that much. And now you're gonna ask them to put an additional driveway just for, um, I guess, enlarging?
Not an additional driveway. They would just have to meet the current requirement of two spaces, two parking spaces.
If they currently do not have one, right?
Uh, well, right. If, if they already qualify and they have to, they can fit two spaces of, um, nine-by-eighteen spaces on their current driveway, they, they wouldn't be limited to that provision. As long as they meet the requirement.
And then how about basements? Like if they finish basements, they're adding more square footage there?
Uh, I have to look at, well, I have to look at the definition of gross floor area and whether or not that exempts them. If that's counted, because sometimes underground area is not counted. Um, I have to pull up the definition.
My understanding is most of the homes on the west, west side do not have a basement?
Right.
They do not.
Some, some do, but most don't do.
Some, some do, but most don't do.
There are some that do.
Right, I mean, or if they could build on top of a garage. I'm just saying, ten percent seems very small for this requirement to add additional driveway or expanded.
See, but it's designed to be that way. It, it applies to every other building or structure in the city that's enlarged. The ten percent is designed to give them a little bit of flexibility, so, you know, you're not just doing some minor work, and then you're, all of a sudden, you're required to meet the parking tabs. But, you know, it's, it's not unusual, if someone's going to do something on their property, that the current laws are going to be, are going to be required. So if you get a site plan approved, and you don't build, was it five years, Mickey? I think it is? You don't build within a certain period of time, and then you go to build, you have to get a new site plan, because the assumption is the laws have changed. So, you know, whatever you did when you first went in there may have changed, and so a house that doesn't have a driveway now, or now is really a problem. When they were built fifty, sixty years ago, maybe it wasn't a big deal, because not everyone had a car, and if they did, it was just one per family. But now we have families where each, each spouse has a car, all the adult, you know, their teenage children have cars, I mean, it becomes a real problem.
Then how about houses with no driveways? What's their solution there? Or you can't, houses on the hills, you can't put a garage, they won't be able to enlarge their houses?
Now, they could probably, they could, I guess they could seek a variance, because that's a, that is probably within the definition of what would be required for a variance, because a variance is typically, if it would be considered a taking, if, if the local government stopped you from doing it, if it could be considered to be a taking otherwise, then that's usually a prime candidate for a variance. So I'm not sure that that would qualify, but that's, you know, it's really the only thing I can think of right off the top of my head.
All right, thank you, Dean.
Other opinions, folks, on the upcoming ordinance change?
Regarding the enlargement, I think you have a valid point regarding the houses, because they are kind of tiny. So is there a way that we can make it more than ten percent? Maybe fifteen or twenty? Because you're right, the houses are pretty tiny on that side, and if you're going large, it's going to go way past. Even if you add a room, it's ten percent.
Ten percent is basically.
The reason we use ten percent is, is as I was explaining to the mayor on a call earlier this week, I believe it was, or maybe it was last week, we can't just come up with arbitrary numbers, okay? It's got to be based on something. And the ten percent was used because that is the standard for every other structure in the city. So, you know, we've carved out this little niche for existing residential dwelling, and it's, but if we're going to change something, what is the, what is the reason for it? Do we have a study to back it up? We have existing law to back up the ten percent. Going to fifteen percent, what is the, what's the rationale behind that? Do we know anything, or are we just speculating that, you know, it's too, it's too little of an amount? I mean, so we, do we have any hard evidence of that? So I just caution you, whenever you start deciding to, to, you know, change a law, the standard in Virginia is, is basically whether it's arbitrary or capricious, or called fairly debatable. If you're just willy-nilly pulling numbers out of the air and attaching them, that, that can be considered to be arbitrary and capricious, and it could overturn.
I have a question.
Thank you, Dean.
What are other jurisdictions, what's, how do other jurisdictions handle that? Do they have similar code ordinance?
Do you have any idea what the other jurisdictions have related this, from your experience?
For, for adding additions to existing homes? I think Dean is the one who did the research. I think he found something similar in the city of Fairfax. I mean, a lot of times, I think, in, in other jurisdictions that I'm aware of, when you do additions to single-family homes, they're, they are exempt, like it is currently here. But I know Dean looked at the city of Fairfax, and they, they have meeting the current requirement. So Dean, do you have any other comment on that?
I, I don't, I can, you know, we can do the research and come back, and I'll, I'll do a little bit of research while we're, while you guys are chatting, and I'll come back if I get an answer right away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome.
Any further comments on this?
Preston does.
Yeah.
Preston.
Oh, Preston, go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, they might want to think about what about motorcycles and scooters? Can they park in the, in these restricted parking zones or not? That's something for the future, but just to keep in mind.
The motorcycle might be considered recreational as well, and it could park in the driveway.
With motor scooters, in the code, we had a problem in the early two thousands of, you know, teenagers running around in motor scooters and zipping around through traffic. We dealt with that. I forget the exact nature of it. I think we required them to be licensed with the city if they could go a certain speed limit. I don't know if we consider them, I know they're considered motor vehicles for licensing purposes if they can, you know, if they can go to a certain speed limit and they're street legal. I don't know if they're considered to be a vehicle for purposes of parking.
Right, I would agree. I think motorcycles and scooters are, should be allowed to park without a permit or pass, because they don't take up that much space.
Do they require decals?
Yeah, we, we didn't, I thought we decided not to do the.
Right, no. We're just doing commercial and recreation.
Were they added to the commercial provision? Preston?
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're considering other types of vehicles in the commercial vehicle definition. We're trying to make sure we kind of exclude other type of vehicles, including motorcycles and scooters, because I don't think they take up that much room.
They don't.
No.
You're comfortable with them parking on the street then, because they don't take that much room?
Right.
Okay. But if they require decals, then they, let me phrase this a different way. Do we, we don't require boats to get decals, do we?
I don't.
Okay. Because if we require.
Considered personal property, I, I think they are taxed, I just don't know what the, if they require a decal, but they are taxed.
I know that travel trailers have to, like a RV has to have a sticker on it, a city sticker.
Okay.
So I would.
RV is actually considered a motor vehicle, but boat, I don't believe is, but it is considered personal property.
So motorcycles could, could be in the driveway or on the street, is that what we're saying? Okay. Thank you.
So can we recap what we're moving forward with?
We're talking about the no overnight commercial parking signage. We saw that this defined commercial vehicle unless it's just one that has the signage. So our work trucks are allowed to park on the street.
I would think.
No.
Okay, so.
Signage or no signage, if it's commercial vehicle, it should fall into that category.
Right. But right now, our commercial vehicle, right, is based on size, if I'm not mistaken, right? So the question is, right?
Exactly.
Oh, so those white vans won't count?
No. You can park a box right now, you can park a box truck on the street, and it's legal.
What, Preston?
Because those are the ones that would be holding ladders and. Yeah, so I guess we, so your intent, and we'll, we'll go back and do the research and come back with the ordinance, but your intent is for trucks that are clearly utilized for work purposes to not be, that those need to park on the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think we can, we'll go back and research and come back with the definition.
Is there any way we could restrict them from parking too close to an intersection?
Well, they're in the driveway, they're not.
They can't park on the driveway.
Yeah.
Well, only, I guess we're saying, all commercial vehicles park on driveway?
Right.
Right? And then the houses with no driveways, we're giving them exemption?
No, I'm putting my decision on that.
I thought we were going to use the parking lots, for the ones that don't have driveways?
No, we haven't even, we haven't really touched on the parking lot, other than, you know, not, it's not a good idea to let them stay there for eternity.
Right.
I mean, ten percent of the houses, that's a lot of houses with, maybe half of that, half commercial vehicles. So we definitely need to figure something out for those houses.
Yeah.
And then we're saying that instead of using the, now they're going to move their commercial on the driveway, and then they're going to move their personal cars on the public road. It doesn't solve a problem, though. You know what I'm saying?
Personal cars are smaller.
It might be smaller, but it doesn't free up parking spaces.
The concern, the problem is that it's more than one or two commercial vehicles that are parking on the road right now, taking up space. So if that's true, let's say there's a lot of families that have three or four work vehicles, and you are taking some vehicles off of the streets.
And then moving those three, four personal vehicles onto the street?
I'm saying like, those are like the.
Oh, that, that what they use?
The one part, yeah.
Okay.
Reducing those.
That's a serious one.
Also, we've got the Prince William County people parking their commercial vehicles here, and then getting picked up.
I'll reduce that too, to Prince William County.
Yeah.
And the fact that we're rolling it out this way, we'll figure out if it's actually going to make a difference.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, we move forward with this.
Yeah.
Include, I want to include in the commercial definition, any trailer or semi-trailer, regardless if it's attached to the vehicle.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Preston, I was just also thinking of utility trailers as well?
However you want to define trailer, but I'm getting this from Arlington County Code of commercial vehicles.
Because trailer has different meanings. You have a utility trailer, you have like the trailer that's on back of a tractor trailer.
Preston, you might want to choose a locality that is more similar to Manassas Park than Arlington, because we, we don't, we are not that close to Arlington, you know, income-wise or, or density, or, I mean, you name it, we're quite different from Arlington.
True.
You're right. I chose them because they have restricted parking as well.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just going to glean from them, but that's a good point.
Can we go back to the lots, because I do want us to resolve that. Are we, are we not going to open up the lots for decal parking?
For commercial vehicles?
No, for any, or just for commercial vehicles, or however you want to. Do we, do we want to utilize the lots for any overnight parking?
The concern I have about the lots is the lack of lighting. In the, in the description, I understand only one lot has adequate lighting that's in bloom. So for now, I just think we need to see what happens with restricting commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles, see what kind of space is freed up. I'm just concerned about the parking.
That is a concern, and I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the family who may, the hardworking family with two box trucks and only room enough on their driveway for one box truck. I mean, that, that's a concern to me. I, I just don't want to make life more difficult for, for families than, than we have to.
Well, the concern with, one of the other concerns that I have with the overflow parking in the parks is now we have a cost. So we're going to have to, you know, I don't remember, when was the last time anyone's at least parked over on the ones over there by the Stone House? There's sizable potholes in there, so we're going to have to spend, spend money to fix that. We're going to have to spend money to put signs up. But I do see what you're saying. But at the same time, you know, how much money will that really cost? We'll have to signs, we'll have to pave, we'll have to have litter pickup, you know, lighting, all that good stuff.
I'm worried about crime as well. It's going to have to be patrolled. It's going to be a late night, you're there late night, someone could be walking through, casing cars, and you wouldn't even know who they are, you wouldn't even notice.
Well, that happens right now, too.
Well, now you have a space, like a target.
Target, right.
Yeah.
And I wasn't thinking so much of opening up a parking lot as having our restriction not apply to box trucks.
Oh.
You know, with the ladders on.
Oh.
Yeah. Have it just, in other words, not change the definition, or, or change it to the extent that it does not, that it excludes those types of van, like the white van, like the painter's van that you see.
A painter's van with no signage?
Right. A lot of the trucks we see do not have signage.
But we're saying that two of those vehicles could park in the, in the driveway.
Well, if, if they are a family with two box trucks but only one driveway.
Well, so a box truck and a van are two different things. A box truck is quite large.
Oh, excuse me, I, I misstated that. I meant the, the van type, van type.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So the thing about that is, going back to Haseeb's point, if we do allow that, then we'll do have to consider how far those, those are from an intersection, how far they are from a stop sign, because even though there are vans and they have, but they'll have stuff on top of it, and it still can be kind of difficult to see around it. I know, I, I only can speak from my experience, when my father's van was in front of the house, I did not like parking in the driveway, because I could see around it. And I drive an SUV. Now, granted, I'm short, but I drive an SUV. I'm not driving a little car, so there's a safety issue with that.
Yeah, yeah. Colonel Reinhardt, could you please comment on the distance that you would have to park from the, we're, we're talking about the, how far you have to be from the intersection when you park? What's the curb length?
Yes, ma'am. There's already in the statute for parking close to intersection, and it, it does not specify whether it's a commercial vehicle, it's any vehicle.
Any vehicle.
And off the top of my head, it's either fifteen or thirty feet. I'd have to double check that.
Okay.
It's actually twenty feet from a crosswalk and thirty feet from an intersection or stop sign.
But also, I think to Laura.
Higher, higher.
To Councilmember Hampton's point, what if they're just parking at the bottom of someone else's driveway? So now there's a van obstructing my sightline, it's not my van, but they're right next to my driveway, and I can't see around.
And then we also now have the problem by allowing trucks that don't have signage, or basically, we could be back in the situation that we're in now, we still have work trucks taking up space. There are, there are parts of the city, and I, I know that from driving around, where there is, not just one or two, there's just like dominos of work trucks.
Yeah.
Would you want to go back to just one vehicle then, instead of two?
I'm sorry, what did you?
Want to go back to just one commercial vehicle instead of two?
We're not allowed to regulate per residence, are we? I thought staff thought it was not legal. That's what I, my.
What Jesse is saying is, instead of saying the requirement is that, you know, you have to have, you can only have two work trucks in your driveway, reducing that down to one. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So that you, you know.
So one on the street and one on the driveway? Is that what we're saying?
No, just one, total.
One total? Wow.
Make it worse.
Yeah.
Because that's, I mean, that's, that's the way it was for me when I had my home-based business, right? So I could only have one commercial vehicle, so I couldn't buy another one. If I wanted another one, I needed to get out of my house and get a new, you know, get a commercial spot versus the home. There's a lot of restrictions with the home occupancy when it comes to having a business in your home. I could only have like twelve people or twelve customers, I think it was a day or a week or something like that, and I was only allowed one commercial vehicle. So I think sometimes maybe the residents don't know the rules, and maybe the, the educating part of it will probably help out a little bit. But if they do have more than, like you said, and it's part of their, you know, the way they make their living, I mean, I was fine with, with just having the one commercial vehicle, because I, it was a small business, it wasn't like I was having, but then when I was like, as I grew, I knew I had to look for a commercial space.
Right.
So, I mean, I knew the rules, so, you know?
Yeah.
I just think it's probably education, too.
Okay. Comments? Comments? Thinking it over. Okay. Vice Mayor Banks, comments?
Yeah, I'm still, I mean, have we agreed on the definition of commercial vehicles, or are you just going to research it? Blah, blah.
We need to research it. We need to research it, we need time.
He said.
I sent you an email, the hell of you, that has a definition of commercial vehicles in it, if you want to take a look at it. It's out of state code. I mean, you can, you can take a look at that and see if you like it.
Where is it?
He emailed it.
I sent you an email, it's, let's see, what title or section is it, bear with me.
Thank you. I'm on my computer.
Yeah, so there, yeah, so the commercial vehicle is found in subsection B of 46.2-1224. It's a rather long one, you know, it kind of is somewhat all encompassing, so, you know, we could just reference the commercial vehicle as defined in that section, that's an easy way to do it, instead of just, you know, taking it out and putting it entirely in our code.
It is easier. Manassas definition of commercial vehicle is 10,000 pounds and it's 21 feet in length.
Well, that's why we have a, we don't call it a commercial vehicle, but we say, you know, trucks or whatever we call it, but they're prohibited if they meet those requirements. We don't, we just don't call it a commercial vehicle. I mean, realistically, a commercial vehicle is any vehicle that you need to have a commercial driver's license to operate. I mean, that's the simplest definition.
Can I read another? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Can I read another comment regarding the commercial vehicles? I also don't think it's necessarily okay to require that work trucks be parked somewhere special. Burke Center did that and it always seemed discriminatory to me. Maybe they shouldn't park right at intersections, they shouldn't block driveways, but that doesn't mean they have to park in some central lot, requiring them to drive to their own work vehicle. So I think this was in regards to the parking lot?
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea either.
Okay. Are we at the point yet where we can have some consensus to provide guidance for staff? Are we there yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
So I guess we're saying that two commercial slash work vehicles in the driveway, making restrictions for overnight, they cannot be on the streets overnight, outside of that, and the recreational vehicles as well, no boats, jet skis, of course, well, I don't know.
What time is overnight start? Oh, sorry.
I don't think we've decided with the overnight yet, the times, but it's something that we need to clarify. And I agree with Councilmember Anson, two vehicles and, yeah, no parking overnight, just to make it easier for, see if that alleviates the problem we're having. If not, then we'll come back and readjust it.
We could.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I think that we should start on the west side. Should be two vehicles that you can park, commercial vehicles in your own driveway, and we would ban recreational vehicles like RVs, boats, jet skis from parking on the street.
I just want to clarify, I mean, the whole city.
Me, too.
Oh, oh, commercial, yes. You're right. You're right. That's correct. The whole city.
The whole city.
Because you're right, people would park.
And you said ban recreational from the streets?
Yes.
What is your opinion on that?
No, I agree, but those, those, the two access painter trucks, are we considering those as commercial?
Yeah, you'd be able to park them on your driveway, two of them.
Yeah. So we're considering them as commercial vehicles? Yeah, I mean, then, yeah, I'm okay with.
I agree, some additions I would think we should consider, like I said, is utility trailers, also heavy equipment. I've seen on a few instances where, I don't know if they're called backhoes, those things that are excavators, actually parked out on the city streets. I've seen, I think it was on Saturday, up by the old Independence School, I saw like a work trailer and a just utility trailer. And I've also seen snow blades left on, like commercial grade snow blades left on the street, so.
Can I ask you a question about the backhoe? How long was it there?
It was on one of the days I just drove around and I saw it, but you could tell they weren't working, it wasn't being, wasn't being used to excavate someone's yard, it was just left there.
Because occasionally, when you do see that type of heavy equipment, it's been staged there for the following day.
Right, so it's like you're digging up some pipes or something like that.
Because they have work to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, this wasn't the case.
Okay.
They didn't give, I should say, it gave the appearance that was not the case.
Okay, okay. So Vice Mayor Banks?
I agree with all that's been said. I'll just take a stab and say overnight could possibly be 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
Yeah. Eight to eight.
So with the two commercial vehicles in the driveway, that is for overnight, it does not apply to the daytime, is that my understanding, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And ban heavy equipment such as backhoes and trailers and things of that nature completely? Completely or?
Yes.
As long as they're not being staged for some purpose?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll have to figure out how to determine if it's being staged.
Can I say one thing about the hours?
Yeah, yeah.
I think 8:00 PM might be kind of late. Most people come back from work around 5:00, 6:00.
Not construction workers.
Well, yeah, I guess handyman works, they'll come back late.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is because.
Especially in the summer.
If they're parking there before 8:00, other residents are going to be finding parking spaces, right? That's what I'm saying.
Right.
What was the recommendations in here? We had some recommendations for hours.
Yes, they did.
That was more related to overnight.
That's what I was saying, if the commercial.
That was for parties and stuff.
If it was for, if we went with the overnight, the hour requirement, we were recommending the midnight for the weekend for visitors, but this, we didn't make a recommendation for the commercial vehicles.
So do we want to do seven to seven?
Yeah, what's the latest service vehicle to come out to provide any kind of service to, to company, anything else?
My furnace people were there the other day until 8:00 in the evening.
Oh, okay. So eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
For now. It doesn't work, we tweak.
So. I think once they get in the habit of knowing they can't park here overnight, they just, we'll leave when they're done.
Right. Yeah, it could become less and less of a problem.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Last, Lo, do you have enough guidance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's a good start.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
So what are our next steps? What's the next steps?
Yes.
Okay.
There were some other items there, like the parking meters, is that?
No, no parking.
No parking.
This is my verification then, no further, this is the way we want to go.
This is it for now.
No additional.
Yeah.
I can answer the question about the next steps. Like I can about the town hall, some of you all will have to decide if you want to do it, you know, when, I worked it out with the plan, get that schedule and what kind of staff support you want for that. But in terms of what we're going to do is, I'll go back with Dean, Al and Mickey, we'll work out all the different ordinance changes that need to have in here, develop the plan, the logistics plan for the signage, come up with a budget for that. So as part of the FY22 budget, we'll come back and present what the, what the amount will be for the signage replacement program, the CIP for FY22, and general timeline for when we think we can get it done. Once we get your approval, then we'll, we'll start advertising that to the public to let them know with plenty of information.
Let me ask everyone a question. Do we need a town hall for changing the commercial vehicle regulation? Or do we want to wait? Or do we not need one for that, but we do need one for the change in the overnight decal on down the line when that comes? What's the consensus?
I think less of a town hall and more of just outreach and letting people know. So maybe some sort of info session rather than a town hall.
No, that's for the commercial in the driveway, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, the thing we're doing today.
Outreach and education as opposed to a town hall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is everyone in agreement with that? Preston?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, okay, that's unanimous.
Staff support with that or is that you all engaging with residents doing outreach and education?
Well, usually, we try to get the word out over the, over the city website when there's a change like this.
If you want staff support, actually.
Yeah, even, even the electric signs, everything.
Yes.
That's when it's implemented, right? We'll start putting it on, we'll give plenty of advance notice, but to solicit feedback right now as well, and if you want some kind of flyer that discusses what we're, what's being proposed to be done.
Right.
Is that correct?
Informational, yes.
Because we'll get it out on all of our sources that we have.
Right.
Yeah.
What would it cost to put some kind of little flyer in a water bill?
We can do it, I don't know what the exact cost is, but it's a few hundred dollars each.
Oh, that's not bad. That's a great way to.
Yeah.
To educate. Pardon?
A lot of people don't read them.
Well, that's true, that's true, but at least we sent it to them.
Put it right under the dollar amount and they'll read it.
It's a try, yes.
How much does it cost to do that? Do you have that on the tip of your tongue?
Okay. On what the exact cost is.
But it is extra, it's extra.
To make you feel good, we do read them at home, though.
Yeah, yes.
We weren't review like they were, I forget which flyer it was, and we just know that people aren't always, always reading it. So when you do want the city to construct a flyer, at least informing them of the proposed changes that are coming up.
Yes.
Yes.
Here's my concern with no public town hall. The thing is, we did this work session, and this is where we're deciding what to implement. Now that what we decided should, we should hear from the public if that's the right avenue or not.
But I thought we already had, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
We got this one.
Your poll.
Your poll.
But we didn't make a decision on which, when we're picking.
Okay.
Right? So I'm saying if we, if we pick this, this, because we gave them options, four or five different options.
Did we?
Wait.
We didn't give them any options.
When did we do that?
The town hall in September.
Okay.
And then this work session, we just decided on one of the options, which is taking away the commercial vehicles.
And of all the people who responded, zero of them would be against what we are doing tonight.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, I mean, the strategy of engagement with the public, one of them is a town hall. That's one of the strategies, you know, to hear back from constituents, is this the right avenue? Which it may, it may be.
The argument could be said that if folks who listened in real time or listening about